Good evening and welcome to the November 6th, the regular meeting of the Oyster River School Board. I would like to begin this evening with the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Denise? Thank you. And a second. Kelly? I do have one change to make. At the end of the meeting, I would like to add a very brief non-public session. Okay. Yes.
Oops, that's loud tonight. Under unanimous consent, where it says "list of policies for second read," that's correct, but then in the motion itself, it says "first read." It should say "second read."
Okay. All right. Any other changes to the agenda?
If we're going to do a non-public, don't we have to have a reason for the non-public to get to put on the agenda?
Oh, to add on to the agenda? Yeah.
Whatever.
It would be to discuss a matter that would adversely affect someone's reputation except for a school board member.
That's all you need.
Yes, perfect. Okay, all in favor of the motion as amended? Seven in favor. Gianna? Yeah, seven in favor and the student rep in favor. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone here for public comment? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Approval of the minutes from the last meeting. To begin with, we have the regular meeting minutes. Can I have a motion? Denise?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second. Kelly? Are there any changes to the regular meeting minutes from October 22nd? I do have one small -- oh yeah, go ahead, Gianna.
I'm having a bit of a complication now because my computer has decided to not function, so I have a couple edits. There's just simply typos. Am I being picked up? The first one is -- sorry, I had this written down, but my thing is keeled over. Page two of five, the first paragraph, starting with Rebecca Noe. I think we got a typo that it was 760 books were checked out compared to 1,434 books as opposed to 10,434 books. That'd be pretty awesome, but it's a little unlikely there. Page one of five, under District, last paragraph, starting with Misty Low, it's just a typo. Portsmouth Symphony, S-Y-M-P-H-O-N-Y. I'm having to go by memory here, I apologize. Those are the ones that I caught offhand. I think there was another one. I will find my notes to send to Karen unless somebody else is lucky and caught the same ones I did. My computer is not turning on.
Okay, any other corrections? Thank you. All right, seeing none, all in favor of the minutes as amended? One, two, three, four, five in favor, student rep in favor, and an abstention. One abstention. And now the non-public meeting minutes from October 22nd. Motion to approve. Denise? And a second. Kelly? Any changes to that? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes? Two, three, four, five, six. Opposed and abstention. One abstention.
Matt, if I may, I actually remembered one of the final changes was actually regarding the non-public on the first public, on the public session where it said "personal" as opposed to "personnel."
Okay, spelling error?
Yeah, they're just typos.
Good. Thank you. All right, we will move on now to district announcements. Come on down.
David Goldsmith.
Misty Low, Massway, good evening.
We were going to talk together a little bit about our teacher workshop day that we just had yesterday and then give you each little updates about our buildings, but we did have a joint teacher workshop day yesterday. We were all at Moheramit. Massway is used as a polling site, so we were all together. It gave us a great opportunity to do a lot of collaborative, cross-building work, which is always a huge benefit for us. I want to thank, we want to thank Ellen Irvin and Sarah Farwell, the math and science specialists for both buildings who organized a great morning work session for everyone around our math best practices. Some of the enduring principles and goals that we laid out for you at the beginning of the year, we were able to address, either continuing to address them or begin to address them yesterday. We began to address this goal around a shared understanding of best practices in math instruction that has nothing to do with resources or programs, but just as an instructor, what are the best practices around math? We're using the NCTM, the National Council Teachers of Mathematics, to drive those best practices, and they organized a great day for everyone who teaches math to do that. We had other groups who aren't math teachers who were able to work collaboratively around their scope and sequences and curriculum as well while we did that in the morning.
In addition, we had some committee work. Sorry, I got to get up here. I was tall, David. And we did some, we, under Suzanne's leadership, we're doing some great work, looking at a variety of programs to be sure that we're meeting, I believe it's HB 10, 215, 1015, excuse me. Anyway, we're starting, talking a lot about English Language Arts, the various programs that we could be using, K through 5, talking about a criteria that we want to create to review the various programs, and then we have our timeline of choosing programs to pilot and things like that. That was a great use of our time. And then yesterday, we ended our day with both of our schools working together around suicide prevention. So kudos to our counselor and school psychologist who led that good work as well. I guess while I'm here, I'll share about Massway. I just wanted to do a quick shout-out to a middle school student who returned to Massway School, to a former Massway student who became passionate about robotics while spending his time at Massway, returned to Massway recently, providing an after-school care club for our 4th graders that chose to join. So I wanted to say a big thank you to Ejo, who came and worked with Mrs. Lifer over, I believe, six different Fridays doing a variety of cool projects. Thank you to Jim Brown. You'll see it on the website if you were interested in reading about that. But we love it when our students come back and share their enthusiasm about things they learned at Massway, and then as they go through the system, to come back and share that with the younger students. It's very exciting. Next week is World Kindness Day, and Massway's going to be celebrating that in a variety of ways. One of them is that we have a world kindness book that students are sent down to the front office. It's very official, on a lovely podium. They get to come and sign it and get a kindness coin and get a lot of praise for anything that they do to show acts of kindness throughout their school day. So we love that to be very visible, and we want our students showing kindness to be on display. So we'll be doing that through the month of December, November, and continue, hopefully, those practices moving forward. And then I just wanted to share, we'll have a school-wide assembly. Tiger comes to us from Plymouth State University every other year. This year, and Tiger, for those of you that don't know, stands for, it's an integrative art, arts and counseling program. They use music and dance to teach different SEL-type skills to our students. This year, "True Blue You" is the theme, and it's really talking about the importance of being true to yourself and what you know is right. It talks about being an upstander and a bystander and doing it in a very fun, developmentally appropriate way for elementary school students. So that's a fun full-school assembly that we'll have. We have an assembly about once a month with a variety of different things, and this kindness anti-bullying piece that Plymouth State does is what we'll be doing in the month of November. And I just want to remind families, there's no school Monday because of Veterans Day, and I hope everyone enjoys their Veterans Day. Oh, questions, please. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Moheramit, since our last meeting, we've had two big events, and then I also want to tell you what's happening here in the month of November. We did have our pumpkin stroll in October. We had a full day of carving, and a huge thank you to the over 40, 50 volunteer family members who came to help our students carve pumpkins. They were able to do that grade-to-grade combined buddy classes, helping each other out, and then, of course, we celebrated those great carvings at night around the Sugar Shack. A big thank you to our PTO and high school students for helping us and staff for helping sell popcorn and cider and baked goods. We had a band. We had a lot of alums come back for the pumpkin stroll, so that's always a great event. And then, last Friday, we took part in the New Hampshire Public Television Broadcasting mock election. So all of our students went up to the Madbury Town Hall. We had been able to arrange that with Eric, the town administrator. A big thank you, of course, to him and to all of Madbury Town Hall. Our students were able to use the actual voting booths. We had created ballots for them. They had to show their lunch card as their ID. We had a few students who didn't have an ID cards. They had to fill out an affidavit. It was all very, very official. We had parents who ran the voting session all day, and it was a really great experience for them. And then, I know many of them went with their adults yesterday to vote, and they were able to see that it was basically the exact same experience for them. So that was really terrific. And then, the month of November and through January, we're going to be continuing with our curriculum enrichment theme of journeys, and now we're focusing, we were focused on animals in September. We're now focused on one very specific animal, which is humans, and we're looking at the journeys of humans, where we go, where we've been, what our family tree history is of journeys and immigration. And so, we're asking students to take part in that throughout this month, and we're organizing with volunteers from the Moheramit community, people to come in and talk to classes about their family's origin stories, whether their origin goes back to, you know, thousands of years with Native Americans here on the continent, or whether their family immigrated at some point, whether it was hundreds of years ago, or 10 years ago, or even two months ago, having people share those experiences as a school. And then we'll continue with some of that work into January when we will be having our Taste of Moheramit evening to celebrate people's cultures and food, which has been a Moheramit tradition for many years that we're trying to bring back since it has gone away. That's what's going on at Moheramit. Questions? Thoughts? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're coming up together, too. Bill Sullivan, Middle School.
Rebecca Noe, High School.
We thought we'd share a little bit about our day yesterday. Teacher workshop day was great. I just want to start by talking about our, we have a group called NHLI. We talked about this a little bit before, New Hampshire Learning Initiative, a group coming in and working with all our staff on our teachers about assessment. And right now, we're working on assessment and really going through a protocol, validation protocol with all our teachers, and they're looking at their assessments and is it rigorous? Is it what they're trying to get across to kids? And it's a great protocol, and all our teachers are learning it, and they're working together within their curriculums to really push each other and validate everything they're trying to do. So we did a lot of that follow-up yesterday. So we started with NHLI two weeks ago, and we carried that work forward yesterday where our groups met, and they did a really nice job. Without a facilitator, they took on the role of facilitator, timekeeper, the whole thing, and really pushed each other to, you know, come up with some really challenging work, and they want to make sure their work is rigorous, and our kids are getting the most out of it, and they did a nice job with that. So that's really what we focused on during our, I'd say, mid-morning session.
And the middle school was nice enough to host the high school, so we were all over here in this building. And so, every single department actually met with their middle school counterparts, which I found extremely productive. I had the opportunity to sit in with English, so the middle school and the high school English teachers worked with Mary Ann Nice, and they actually looked at writing, and they looked at student samples of writing. They looked at, and all the names were removed, but we looked at maybe a weaker student. We looked at a student that was doing pretty well, and then we looked at what we would consider a strong student. But what Mary Ann had them do is go through and kind of look at the macro, like how do you organize writing? What are the big ideas in the writing down to the micro, which would be like grammar and sentence structure? And then, how are we looking at that and carrying it across from the 5th grade all the way through the 12th grade and showing improvement with our students? And so, the feedback that I got from teachers is some of the best PD that they've actually had. And so, that was really good feedback to have from them, and then to go and talk to them afterwards. I'm actually supervising English this year to see how they're implementing those things, and we're hoping to bring Mary Ann back into, back into the school later in the year in a different teacher workshop day.
All right. A couple things going on at the middle school real quick. Today was the start of quarter two, so we're 25% of the way done and looking forward to the next three quarters of the year. We have a Veterans Day assembly coming up on November 8th. This will be an assembly in here. We will have veterans from the community and veterans of current staff and students who come and talk and share, and then we'll have a breakfast for families out in the Learning Commons. We'll have a PTO meeting coming up November 12th. Progress reports will be coming home, first quarter progress reports, on November 14th. And our Scholastic Book Fair is coming up, 18th through the 27th of November, and it'll be held right in here during the days, and we'll have, I think, the 21st, Thursday the 21st, we'll have a night where parents will come in and kids will be able to come back and see things. Now, for a big announcement that Noe and I are here to share together, is we have the pilot of the Polaris Dawn mission that flew above the earth in September. Scott Potite will be coming to visit us. He'll be coming to the middle school, and he'll be coming to the high school. The unique part of the thing about Scott and what's really special about him is he is an Oyster River graduate, and he's a UNH graduate. So, local, he's coming back, shares some things with us at the middle school. He's going to be with us for about 45 minutes, about a 30-minute presentation and about a 15-minute question-and-answer with kids. So we'll have a big assembly right in here.
And we're going to race him over to the high school, and so we'll have, I have quite a few teachers that are signing up their classes to come down. So as soon as we knew this could be an opportunity, I reached out to Science, Math, and Social Studies first. So he's going to have a presentation for them and a question-answer session, and we're going to make sure he gets lunch. And then I actually am going to have a session during Flex where any student in the building can sign up to and to come and see him, maybe a picture, question-answer session, and then he's going to visit our astronomy class. And then I am doubly excited only because I found out he's an Iron Man. He's done multiple triathlons, and so I get to talk to him about that. Are you done? Okay. All right, so I'll do all of my other things now. All right. As mentioned, no school Monday for Veterans Day. The 12th, so Tuesday is when report cards come out. That'll be after school, and so in the newsletter, I'll make sure that I put the directions on how to get to those. 15th, we have our astronaut coming. I'm super excited about that. The fall play is going to be November 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. It is the 39 Steps, and it's from the movie by Alfred Hitchcock. And so, that should be a lot of fun from our talented students. And I think those are all of the announcements that I had, and I know Stella has a few more for you. Yes.
Is the play at 7:00? 7 o'clock?
It's going to be at 7:00 PM, and there will be a matinee, but I'm going to double-check on the time and bring that back to you. Other questions for me?
I have one, yes. Just to be clear for everybody watching, the report cards are not going to be physically sent home. They're going to be accessed through--
Correct. They're digital, and so it'll be right on Power School, and it'll be just like the progress reports where you can just go in, print the report. That will be the report card.
And there's somebody they can contact if there's trouble getting in?
Absolutely. We have the registrar that's in counseling, or any of the counselors or administrators, too.
Awesome. Thank you.
I had a question for Bill, actually.
I know. Well, I came back.
You had sent out a parent survey about progress reports and kind of connecting with their teachers since we had to push off the--
Yes.
--that parent-teacher time. I was just curious what the response was like, if teachers have shared any feedback that they've gotten.
I've been asking teachers in team meetings, and some parents have reached out. It doesn't sound like a lot have. I've asked teams if they've reached out, and some have reached out to families that feel like they should get in earlier with a conference, but I haven't, I haven't heard that there's been a big push for earlier conferences from individual families. But I've been asking, I just haven't--
Right, right. And maybe something will pop a little bit more after the quarter-one reports come out and stuff.
That's exactly what I think. That'll be next week. I was going to add, when you mentioned progress reports, the middle school progress reports will be a physical, hard copy that will be going home next week. Thanks for asking that, so I could share that with you. Any other questions for the middle school? All right.
Rachel Blansett, DIJ Director for the District. I just have a few updates for you all. So, we had another DIJ Community Group meeting last Monday? Yeah, I think so. But we will be having a next meeting that will be Monday, November 18th, at 6:00 PM in the high school library. And this is where we'll continue to plan for our annual spring event, focusing on belonging. We also hosted the first parent and caregiver support spaces of the year. Small attendance, but mighty conversation. So, hoping December will bring out maybe some more families. The next meetings are going to be held on Monday, December 9th, 6:00 PM in the high school library, and that's going to be for the parents and caregivers of LGBTQIA+ youth. And then, the other one is going to be held Wednesday, December 11th, 6:00 PM in the high school library, and that's going to be parent and caregiver, caregivers of multicultural youth support space. The statewide New Hampshire Educators of Color is also bringing Dr. Bettina Love to the state, which is going to be fun. Unfortunately, we had to reschedule, but actually, the time and date, I think, works better, particularly for educators, because it's not going to be during the workday. So, it is coming up on Wednesday, November 13th, and that is going to be from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Keene State College, so I'm hoping that brings out some different educators from across the state. I have been engaging in more restorative conversations with students around bias incidents, so meeting with students, meeting with principals, meeting with counselors. Luckily, we've only had a few come up, but I have been contacted and we've been collaborating on what that process looks like. The high school DIJ Student Club is going to be starting a film series this year to highlight the various cultural heritage months. So, their first one is actually going to be held during both Flex periods, next Wednesday, November 13th, and they are going to be showing a PBS documentary, I believe, called "Native," so looking at Native American history, culture, significance, all of those pieces. And so, students can sign up through their advisor or with Lisa Harling in the high school library. And then, lastly, the Belonging Committee, where we're going to be reading "Belonging Through a Culture of Dignity." We had 16 sign-ups from the district representing all of the schools, so that's really exciting, I think, particularly for a district-wide committee, and I'm excited to order the books and move forward with that learning together. But that is it. Any questions for me? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's it from the district. Are there any board announcements? I actually have a board announcement. Over the weekend, I believe it was on Saturday, although the day is not important, the New Hampshire Basketball Coaches Association had their annual Hall of Fame induction, and Oyster River had two coaches inducted into the Basketball Hall of Fame. Donnie Mayard coached basketball for 25 years, including 20 as a head coach, the boys' head coach, and one as the girls' head coach. He had a varsity record of 310 and 168, won a Class I, Class I, state titles in '92, '95, '96, coached JV boys for three years, and was a varsity assistant for both boys' and girls' team. The second inductee was David Nichols, who coached basketball at Oyster River for 23 years, leading both the boys' and girls' teams to state championships. Coached the boys from '79 to '88, winning a Class I title, and in 1988, guided the girls to three state titles in '03, '06, and 2009. Two of those seasons were undefeated. So congratulations to Mr. Mayard and David Nichols, and thank you for representing Oyster River. Okay, we'll move on to the-- oop, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yesterday, the middle school counseling and health departments co-hosted a parent information group on the SOS Signs of Suicide program that they run through the 7th and 8th grade curriculum. It was sort of a parent introductory night, and it was really informative and really great, and I want to thank all of the teachers, counselors who hosted at the middle school, and if they do it again, I would encourage folks to come. It's just really good information to have, and as a general-purpose citizen, it's information that we don't usually see in our day-to-day unless we go looking for it, and it's a nice way to sort of get caught up and spun up to what the best practices are, what things you should look for as a parent, because my parent instruction manual still hasn't arrived. I don't know about the rest of you all. So, anyway, that's it.
I also attended the same SOS workshop with Heather, and she pretty much covered everything I was going to say, so thanks for that. And the other one, I'll leave because I'm willing to bet Stella will say it, but I might interrupt you if you don't. I don't want to steal all your thunder, so.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening. I just want to thank the principals for talking a little bit about the teacher workshop day. We had a variety of different activities occurring, as you can see. One, I'm just going to mention a few other things that was happening on the teacher workshop day yesterday. Math, 6 through 12, as with ELA, the math department did meet, and they reviewed their scope and sequence of skills and content, grades 5 through Algebra I. That work is going to be carried over on Friday when Lisa Halbach and Clay Cahoon meet, and I, meet with the Barrington Algebra I teacher and also with Sarah Rollins to go over the Algebra I classes that happen at the middle school level and work on alignment of those courses, so that we have the students entering from Barrington, the students coming from the middle school, and the students at the high school that all have Algebra I, that there's alignment with those courses. So that work continues, and the math department will continue to work on their scope and sequence of content and skills, reaching all the way to Algebra II. So that work will continue in a later date. Science had a wonderful day. 5 through 12 science teachers worked on writing in the science classroom and what that looks like for labs. So they utilized an AP Biology lab as a student artifact and talked about how you build to get to that point for where students can do, where they can participate in experiments and run labs and write labs, more specifically, what a lab writing looks like, and that, talk a little bit about the skills that go into that and how they can scaffold that through the middle school and all the way to the point where kids are at the high school level. So that work happened, and there's a lot of interest from the science department. I had them complete an exit ticket so I could get a level of interest to continue this work, and almost everyone said that they are very interested in continuing the work over the summertime even, so I'm excited about that. World Language Met, they looked at, and that's 5 through 12, they did some calibration work and looked at how students progress, and they looked at some student work to calibrate to make sure that the middle school and the high school teachers are examining proficiencies in similar ways. And Social Studies Met as well, and looked at the scope and sequence, as did Art and Music. So there was a lot of collaborative work happening in all of the different levels, whether it was at, between Massway and Moheramit, or the middle school and high school. In the afternoon yesterday, we had all of the high school and the middle school staff in this room, and we talked about Vision of a Graduate, and we discussed sort of just reminding people about the history of that work and where we are at. The high school had an opportunity to share the work that they're doing today with Vision of a Graduate, and we discussed vision of a rising 9th grader and what that looks like. What do we envision for the skills and dispositions of our rising 9th graders? What do we hope for? How does it connect with our vision of a graduate? And what does that look like? So those conversations, that was the beginning point. So those conversations, that was the beginning point for those conversations. And I know that the middle school teachers, again, had another exit ticket. And the middle school teachers and high school teachers appreciated the opportunity to have those conversations with each other. They did some small group work where they were all mixed together, and they had, along with the larger meeting. And that allowed for some discussions about the similarities between the middle school and the high school, and how do we build upon what, you know, each year scaffold what we're looking for students to have acquired to the point where they get to the 9th grade. So we're excited to continue that work. And I know that Bill and Alita and the middle school staff will follow up and let you know how that work is continuing. And then lastly, I just want to thank all of the parents who came to the ICAC and also community members who came to the ICAC presentation. We had about 40 or so people attend. Last year, we had about 50 to 60 people. So we're really excited that we could have them come again to do the presentation. And Nico the Dog did come this time, was a huge hit. So we look forward to continuing that relationship and being able to have them come to Oyster
Okay. Thank you very much, Superintendent.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to Suzanne for organizing and working closely with school leaders and directors for the work yesterday. It is our, I think, priority to really fully embrace and use that professional time along throughout the year to kind of, in some ways, engage our professionals in quality of work that's aligned with our administrative plan, but really focuses on a series of continuing initiatives and really building that sense of collaboration across the district with teachers. I had a great opportunity to participate with the elementary math work and just sit in on other initiatives. And so I appreciate that, all the work organizing. It's like being the air traffic controller. But also want to acknowledge our principals and directors for facilitating a lot of these sessions out there in front and helping move this work forward. Also, Catherine had the opportunity to meet across the system with registrars and a whole group, talking about consistency, about data input, and just trying to building systems and structures. So a lot happening, and it was great to see. So thank you for that. And I think just to add, as part of my entry plan work, I had the continuing opportunity to meet with high school departments. Becca's been kind enough to schedule each week, just small meetings. And this week, I had the pleasure of meeting with art, music, and science. And to expand on Suzanne's point of really focusing on the preparation of middle school students and that, I would say, goal we have this year, that's really connected to what came out of the Spring 24 Competency Survey, where parents were really speaking to an interest in understanding how we better prepare our middle school students for that transition to high school. So much of the work that's underway and my discussions with department members at the high school is really to kind of surface those priorities around what would be helpful for our focus at the middle school and 7th, 8th grade and so on. So that, there's a lot of entry points for a focus on that area of work as well. I also had the pleasure of, with my entry plan, meeting with the PTOs, the leaders of the PTOs, to understand how PTOs support and in some ways help to enhance the learning experiences of students across the system. It was a great opportunity just to get anecdotal feedback about, you know, their work, also to say, how can we support and partner with them to strengthen their efforts? And each group is really at a different stage relative to the history of involvement. But it was nice to have everybody in the same room to really talk about the distinct differences from high school to middle school to elementary. And we're going to kind of seek to meet regularly to see how we can talk about things, especially around fundraising and all kind of common practices or the challenges around that as well, and how we work on that. So that was, it was a nice conversation. I appreciate the opportunity to hear their feedback as well. Speaking of the entry plan, been working with Jen Brown and trying to organize a presentation for December around the themes that came out of the community conversations that I'd like to share with the board and also the community. I think it's really important to kind of report back out of what I would say, what I would say, consistent messages around different sets of stakeholders and parents as well. So looking forward to sharing that with the board and the community as well. I want to shift gears and just introduce to the board and maybe seek some feedback. On our November 20th meeting, we really have a great opportunity to hear from architects from Nova Studio, who've been working on three specific projects and meeting regularly with principals to really go over, what I would say, the progression of thinking towards the Massway Expansion Project, focusing originally on the cafeteria, Moheramit Expansion Project, and all the work around the Building Needs Survey that they will present. We certainly can talk about how we can organize that meeting, the kind of structure of the meeting, which would benefit, I think, either, first, on one hand, the introduction of information specific to design options for Moheramit renderings and cost projections, but also how it might, in some ways, provide an opportunity for community members who'd like to participate and ask questions in a way, knowing historically how that has kind of been presented here at the board level. So seeking input, we are going to meet, have a planning meeting with architects for the 20th. The board will have materials, I think, on the 15th, on November 15th, prior to, the week prior to the meeting, to really be able to look through and prepared to answer questions about this. But as I mentioned before, where we started simply in the spring around simply looking at how we can expand and where we have kind of journeyed or arrived relative to looking at the programmatic values and experiences that we want at our elementary schools and that spatialization, and how do we think in a comprehensive way about optimizing space or thinking about additions relative to how we want programs to unfold now and in the future. So I think there'd be a lot in each of these particular projects to unpack and talk about and give enough time and for questioning, or really to point to next steps in the process as well. So we can do this offline, but trying to get your feedback on what format would work best is important. Denise?
Just wondering if it would make sense to workshop it, you know, have a shortened, regular meeting and then do as a workshop, possibly?
I think so. I know we have elementary students participating that evening, you know, probably start there and then just kind of limit the agenda so that we could workshop that experience. Great.
Does everybody prefer to move to a workshop for that? Does anyone have any objections?
Doesn't really matter either way, whether you do a workshop or not. It's, you're still in the same room, you're still physically here.
Yeah, yeah. I think we should, though, broadcast that one.
Well, then you probably wouldn't want to do a workshop, then.
Just keep a regular meeting.
Workshops are always, you're not required to broadcast a workshop.
So I guess I'm thinking a little bit about the release of the information and the timing of it, so that we could, in either case, it's not really the workshop format or the meeting format, it's not really getting at what you want, where folks can ask questions from the public, that we're going to be able to ask questions. And so for the first hack, it might make sense to have it just be a workshop where we get the first go-round of questions. And then as we get a little further into the process, because this is just the first pass through it.
Correct.
We talk about having Novo come back to run specific public sessions where we can talk about that, like more focused things instead of, you know, trying to, because it might be really nice for us in a workshop format to like get up and point at things on the drawing together that you really can't do if it's on the slide. And like the movement at the first pass of when you're looking through drawing sets or whatever, it could be really helpful. So my really slow thought process with a lot of words is prefer it to be a workshop. I wouldn't worry about broadcasting it. We will do a public engagement piece at a timing that makes sense, because I don't think that timing necessarily is right now.
I would agree with that recommendation, or at least how this could be organized and unfold. I mean, there will be an opportunity for the board members to ask about various options and to seek more information before that, what I would say, in the future, deliberate opportunity to kind of present to the broader community as well.
Okay. So then we'll adjust the agenda to show a shorter meeting and then a workshop afterwards. Okay?
Great. Thank you. That's...
Business Administrator? No report for this evening, thank you. Student Representative?
So I wanted to start off by noting that Mouth of the River Coffee House is taking place tomorrow night in the NPR at the high school. So that'll be exciting. And then also on Saturday, we do have the New England's Cross Country Event taking place, in which our cross-country teams will be competing. And then the volleyball semifinals are also, have excitingly started tonight at 6:30. And so if they win, they will play again in the finals on Saturday. There's also a staff versus student basketball game that's scheduled to be held on November 14th at 3:30 PM. So right after school with a $3 admission fee as a fundraiser for the senior class. I think that's a new thing that we're doing this year, and that'll be really exciting to see. Lastly, the math team had a math meet today, right after school as well. And the reporters at Oyster River did place well with a quote from the meet reflecting that it was great to see kids jazzed about math. So that is what I have for you guys today. If there are any questions?
I'm sorry, I was typing, and my brain did not hear what you said about cross-country.
Yes, I don't have the most information on it, but we have the New England meet on Saturday. Yeah. And that's, our cross-country teams will be competing in that.
That's like a big deal, right? Like you had to like get through a lot of things to be able to go to the New England meet? So like, I know Becca's like, "Come on, let me talk."
That was gonna, that was gonna be my ad.
Oh, do you want to talk? Okay. They have to place at their division meet, which is their state championship, and then they have to be in the top six of the Meet of Champions, which was last Saturday. And so that's all the teams in the state that made it to Meet of Champs. And actually, Oyster River placed first overall in the state of New Hampshire, so even beat all of the D1 teams. So that's how they made it into New England. And so the girls', the whole team is racing, and then we had one of our boys who individually made it in.
So the girls' team won the division championship and the state championship?
They got second runner-up in the state championship. We had a few that were injured. And then at the Meet of Champions, which is all of the teams in the state that made it there, out of all the divisions, they placed first overall. A very talented team.
All set, Stella? Excellent. Thank you very much. Finance Committee? No report for this evening. We will move on to the unanimous consent agenda, which includes a list of policies for second read, including KFA School Conduct on Property, KHB Advertising in the Schools, EBCH Toxic Chemicals, IGEE Parental Objections to Specific Course Materials, and IHAMA Teaching About Alcohol, Drugs, and Tobacco. Does anyone wish to discuss any of those policies? All right. I will make a motion to approve the unanimous consent agenda.
I'll second.
Seconded by Denise. All in favor? Seven in favor, and the student rep in favor. Okay. We actually have no discussion or action items this evening. Are there school board committee updates, future meetings? Sounds like a finance committee meeting coming up.
Policy Committee is next Thursday, I believe is correct. Yes. And also, as Rachel said, the DEI Community Group met last week and did a very interesting exercise around values. And we, as we usually do, we get so caught up that we lose track of time. And so next month, we're going to focus on planning the spring event.
And just Wellness Subcommittee is coming up on November 18th. It's a Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Is anyone here for public comments for the end of the meeting? Oh, go ahead. Do you have a...
Sustainability will be on November 14th. I'm sorry.
No, that is not your fault. It's my fault. I apologize. I should have let you finish. Do we have anyone here for public comment at the end of the meeting? Okay, seeing none. Closing actions, we have future meeting dates, November 20th, regular meeting, that's two Wednesdays from tonight here. On November 26th, which is the Monday before Thanksgiving, we have a 7:00 PM budget workshop in the ORHS Library. And then our next regular meeting after that will be December 4th, the first Wednesday in December. We will need to move into a non-public session. So I would like to motion that we move to a non-public session under RSA 91-A3, Section 3, the discussion of matters that are likely to adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the school board. Can I have a second? Kelly? And this will be a roll call, though, please.
Renee Bennett, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Matt Bacon, yes.
Heather Smith, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Kelly Ickes, yes.
Giann Jolci, yes.
Thank you very much.